Plant Commission order, would you stand with me please? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and thank you for the blessings and opportunities. An opportunity again to serve our fellow man and we pray Heavenly Father that you be with us in our deliberation this morning and we be fair and just to all and pray just continue to be with us in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rhonda Allen. Richie Boland. Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Steve Sandlin. Mike Vought.
Here.
Vincent Windrow. Craig Lynch.
Present.
We have court.
Let me entertain a motion under approval of our two twenty-eight minutes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that they be approved as mailed.
Alright, sir. Have a second.
Second.
All present, motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Doug, anything withdrawn or deferred?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there is the final plat approval for Leanna Estates. That is going to be deferred or withdrawn at this point into the next meeting. The plan was reviewed and the comments were submitted, however, we did not get the revisions back. And at this point, even if you had come in with them last minute, we wouldn't have time to review the revisions. But, so at this point, we're just going to move this to the next meeting that we have.
So it'll be the night meeting?
Yes, sir.
Did this body approve the preliminary plat? I don't remember it coming through in the past.
There wasn't a preliminary for this one, it's only three lots, it wouldn't require a preliminary plat.
So it's just approval?
Correct. Actually, it's a minor plat in that sense. If it had been two lots, we could have done administratively, but since there was a third lot, the state law only allows us to approve administratively one or two lot subdivisions, so.
Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, submitted for site plan approval, Wilco Travel Plaza.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this is the Wilco Travel Plaza, it's new construction of a little over eleven thousand five hundred square feet of floor area, it's for a convenience station and restaurant on twelve, not quite twelve and a half acres. Planning Commission members will probably recall that this was considered back in the June twenty-ninth, two thousand and ten, Planning Commission meeting. Since that time, they have made several modifications to the plan. The biggest change that they've made, originally, the two areas, you see that there's an area where the, I guess that would be on the south side of the property, where the, there's a gas canopy area for passenger vehicles and then there's a separate area to the north of that for the larger eighteen-wheel trucks. Originally, those two areas were interconnected, you could get to one side from the other. They have changed that, which has resulted in significantly less concrete or asphalt on the property than what was there originally. There's still quite a bit, but it has been reduced pretty significantly. That was really the biggest change, as far as the use is concerned, that really hasn't changed any. This was approved by the Board of Commissioners back at their June seventeenth, two thousand and ten meeting, as far as the use of the property and zoning the property was concerned. There are some drainage issues as well, and with that, I'll turn that over to Mr. Corbett.
Well, the issues have to do with the quality requirements. When this was first approved, they didn't have to meet the quality requirements that are now required. And they've done that with a couple of things, and one of them is a system, it's a system that they've had approved in other states to basically clean off this asphalt and it allows, they get some credit for removing the particles and stuff such that you're not actually polluting things. Basically, they clean it up before it drains. And so it's a new system for us, but because other places are allowing it, we're going to allow it also and then we'll, excuse me, monitor the processes go through. But anyway, it's a combination of that and their detention area, they meet our requirements. And those were the challenges. And we're meeting, we're having that type of challenges with a lot of the new sites. Old sites, they're coming back in for reapproval because there is no grandfathering these things as far as the stormwater quality requirements and stuff. And even some of the subdivisions, you guys saw that last week up in Farmington, at the one up there where we had to, they had to put a detention area last month that was not required originally. It was required because of the new quality requirements. And so, we're working with these developers and engineers as they bring these in to meet these new requirements. Anyway, this site now meets the requirements of the, for us, Mr. Chairman.
You're talking about it's cleaning it up, what how, what do you mean?
It's basically a, it's like a wetback big machine that goes across and they have a scheduled cleaning schedule where they go and basically vacuum all of the asphalt. Where a lot of times when you have the asphalt and-
Sediment in there or something, I guess.
Hmm?
Get sediment in there or something, it kind of fills up.
And of course, on asphalt, you'll get a film of oil and stuff that gets into your water and there's a lot of grinding when you got heavy traffic with the turning movements, you grind off the asphalt so you get fines and stuff like. Basically, their system goes through and cleans that up on a weekly basis so that it doesn't get caught up in the runoff from the water as it goes into the system.
How do you monitor it, know they're actually doing that?
We're working on it.
Because it sounds great, but a year, two, three years now, they may just discontinue that process.
Well, our inspectors will be going out to the site and checking those types of things and we see evidence, and you can see evidence of the asphalt and stuff because you'll see a film on the water and stuff. If you see evidence, we either get with them or we'll stop what they're doing and have to come up with another system. A lot of the stormwater systems throughout the country have new BMPs, new systems that they're putting in there. We're trying not to have too many with mechanical parts in them, which a lot of them do have because once we take them over, if we took them over, then we'd have to operate these things. Now, this one's going to be operated by the truck stop, but if it doesn't work, then we will require them to come, some kind of remediation system.
Will it be onsite or will this be a contract and somebody?
It'll be onsite.
So it stays there all the time, we don't have to worry about the guy getting there?
Right, it's not like they're, you know, going somewhere else to do the same thing.
So Dale, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
First of all, TDEC has approved this type of BMP?
To be truthful, Mike, we've not called TDEC, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, but are you saying that because they vacuum it, how, I can understand that will pill, will pick up sediment and break dust and things like that, but as far as the hydrocarbons leaching from the asphalt, how's that, there's no way that's going to be able to pick that up?
They'll still get some of that. We, in checking into it, we've, what we've been told is it works other places and so, we're trying to be lenient and working with them and allow them to try a new technology.
You still have a detention area here, right?
Yeah, we have a detention area in the, had to be the northeast corner there. Through that detention area, they get sixty-five percent reduction and what they're looking for is the additional fifteen, they have to have eighty percent reduction in the removal of sediment and stuff. So, as the water comes off of there to go through this detention area, that's where we'll be able to tell if this system is working or not.
Dale, what's the, what would be the alternative if this vacuum system doesn't work?
Well, they have the option of some routing, they can do some grassy swells. The problem at this site is most of it, of course, is asphalt. So they limit some of the things they can do and a lot of the rest of the site is, they don't have much dirt to grow, you know, grass and that kind of stuff. And so, the alternatives to retrofit some of this gets pretty expensive. And they can have some mechanical oil-water separators in there. We checked, we thought there was a need for an oil-water separator, but there is no requirement from the state for that because of the system. And so, one of the retrofits would be picking up the waters, through an oil-water separator and taking out the, some of the asphalt stuff, which would then give the additional removal aspect that they're looking for.
Well, is porous asphalt not an option because of the trucks, the weight of the trucks?
That's correct.
Oh, yeah, porous asphalt is a horrible idea.
So, if the trucks are, the really heavy duty stuff would be a problem.
These rules and new rules and regulations, they got to go by. How far down does that trickle, from a development like this to how far down? To a size-wise or to a subdivision or?
Well, it's any fifteen thousand square feet or less is where these regulations would apply. If a site is less than fifteen thousand square feet, they don't have to comply with the requirement to move these sediment and stuff out of the water. And so, but on a subdivision, any old subdivision that comes in, we're having to try to figure out how to retrofit those things to meet the requirements because we're not allowed to grandfather those things in.
While you mention that, Dale, is there no wiggle room? We don't have the option to say, no, you don't have to do that. It is something that's mandated and-
It's mandated by EPA, which comes through the state and they turn, make us, and then they inspect. They not only go outside and inspect the project, then they inspect our program by doing an audit almost every two to three years.
So it can't, it shouldn't come before us for some type of variance?
That's correct.
Okay.
So in the communities where you say it's working, how do they know it's working? How are they measuring its effectiveness?
Just talking to them, just from the water quality.
Do you know what frequency they're testing it?
No, I don't. And we would set that in the office once it gets in place and the inspector will be probably out of our office, be either Bob or Todd, be going out and doing the inspections for us. During the construction period, David's inspector on site will be looking at what they're doing, but that system won't actually be in place until the last part because, you know, you got all the construction work and stuff in there going on.
Some of these things that are still out in the wings that hadn't been brought forth, as a community aware, do you, have you alerted them any way that these new regs are going, something they're going to have to address?
When they bring in an idea, they bring in a proposal to us, either site plan or subdivision stuff, we go over that with them at the point in time. Doug and Elizabeth go with what's required on their side and we tell them, you know, you need to look at this because you're going to be required to do this. Most of them, if they've been doing a lot of these, are aware of it already.
Yeah, it's no surprise, that's been going on for multiple years.
The bigger cities have did it since ninety-two and of course, we got into it in about five or six years ago where we're doing it. And then the new requirements have kicked in the last year or two for the eighty percent removal.
That five or six-year window would be the difference between the original plan on Farmington and what we saw last month. If you had a large enough area, if you had three or four acres to put in a detention pond here, would that suffice or we're moving towards where we have to have something mechanical, either a separator or the vacuum system you're talking about or?
If you don't have, if you don't have room, you can do grassy swells, you can basically ditch full of grass, you get some removal of that, you need to, we have to do some combinations where you can retain the first inch, we'll get into that where we have to do some retention areas. And then, there's a formula for all these BMPs that basically the state's put out. We go through a checklist and say, you know, you got this percent removal, we got this percent removal, you're okay, you can go from there or whatever. So, I mean, if you've got a site like this, and many of our sites in the county are like that where they're all rock, then we, you have a problem because you're not going to be able to get a grassy swell and at least your grass won't grow in there. Even your detention areas have to be blasted and some of it, so the rock creates a problem for us here. It's not a problem if you're in Memphis where you got a lot of dirt. It's a problem if you're here or maybe in the east where you, like in Chattanooga and Oxford where you got so much change in elevation that the water really doesn't rest there long enough. I mean, it just comes clear, but you still have to meet the requirements for the removal. So, you have different BMPs that you get into.
Okay, questions?
Well, we've been talking all about the stormwater part, but, and I take it this is on sewer, so it's going to have to pass the city standards also.
Yes, sir.
We haven't talked anything about the rest of it, about actually layout and things. Was it staff's idea not to have the two areas connected or was that their idea?
I believe that was the owner's idea. Actually, Mr. Manley Thweed is here with Huddleston Steel, I think he was working on this project. He could answer specific questions as far as why the changes were made that were made.
I'm just looking at the residential use or car traffic, it's all going to be on the front of site. Capital Way is basically, if I'm not wrong, a dead-end road, it doesn't go anywhere.
That's right.
If there's a lot of trucks coming out, they're all going the same way. And most of them are going to be going back to interstate. They're all stacked in that turn lane, car's never going to get out. They're all going to be trying to turn a left, it just looks to me like they ought to be connected, at least by something of limited size, so big trucks couldn't go, so a car could go back there to get out. I'm just thinking out loud, I've been looking at this for two minutes now and I'm an expert already, of course. But, I just see a problem right there because if this place does a lot of business, two trucks stacked up or three and nobody's, and everybody's dead in the water right there. Is there going to be signalization at the end of Capital Way?
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
Busy road.
Busy road and the trucks are going to keep coming out and this poor mom and dad in their SUV, they're stranded right there. I would just like to see, or at least the thought, or somebody that knows more than me tell me why there's not a connection here so they can get back there to get out with the truck.
To Will's point, and I have a separate point, if you're pulling a gooseneck, you know, camper with a gas truck and I don't, I see, I don't know whether gas pumps over here on the large truck side or not, but if you want to fill up with gas and then pull over and park, you really, you're pulling a gooseneck where no gas pumps on the, on the north side, yeah.
Or a boat to the lake, or anything.
A boat to the lake, yeah, camper, gooseneck trailer with, you know, cattle or flatbed and you're pulling it with a gasoline truck, then you can't pull over there and park without going back out on the main road.
I just want to address, I get Manley Thweed, work at Huddleston Steel Engineering, probably addressing both your questions. I think the intent was to truly separate the two traffics. The pedestrian vehicles up front don't need to be mingling and so forth with all the truck traffic and so, I'm not sure if the exit for the pedestrian traffic is going to be hindered by the trucks really because there's not going to be that much stacking on that road. I just, I don't see that happening. The trucks will come in there in the back to get the scales and get their, and get their gas, their fuel and on the way back out, they're not there for very long. And really, the pedestrian traffic will come in and most of the time, they go through the drive-through, excuse me, they go inside and spend some time in there, you know, and use the restroom and so forth and then they come back out. There shouldn't, they intentionally separated them to keep the traffic separated. That's what I'm beating around the bush to say.
It just looks to me like, I mean, I, that mill can be fairly busy in the mornings and in the evenings when people are coming back and forth to work and I could just see trucks stacked up right there. But at the same time, you don't need somebody in a minivan back there driving through the middle of all those trucks.
Right, well, now, the trucks, they're going to come on back to the back, that's what I'm saying, you know.
When they're trying to get out, they're in this turn lane out here on Capital.
Okay, and on the way back out?
Trying to make a left turn back toward the interstate. If that mill's busy, two or three trucks and it's passed or back to that entrance and exit to the pedestrian side.
Right, right.
And those people are stranded unless they make a left, a right turn, go down there and make a U and come back again. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Even still, on most, on most, you know, gas stations, you have two opportunities to exit and I'm only seeing one. So, if that exit's blocked for some reason, like, nobody can get out.
I'm not sure of the frequency of that, but, you know, that might be a concern that I can approach the owner about.
And I can say the loves, we attend that one, we frequent that a lot and it's a bummer because it's the trucks that's back behind that McDonald's right there and it takes forever to get out right there.
Yeah, if you know what that side exit, you're doing the exact thing right here.
We have to get on the interstate and go around and come back to get out of there, so, it's a bummer.
Are both of those exits and entrances, is it marked? Are both the entrances over here, one entrance and one exit?
Is there an in and out or are they both, both ways?
The ones for the truck is both entrance and exit and-
Really, all three of them are both ways.
That's right, that's right. And, you know, part of the reason why, it's not the only reason, part of the reason why they separated them was also just to decrease the amount of impervious area, I mean, just to, just for that reason. But the other thing was just to separate those two traffics.
What's, how many, how many trucks are blocking, how many trucks are blocking? What's the distance between?
We got a hundred twenty-three feet right there, so you got two trucks.
Two trucks are blocking, two trucks are blocking going out on that.
Three at the most.
It's all getting confusing out here, though.
See, if you're pulling there and you get gas, you get your, I'm in my four forty-five Chevy, a twenty-foot gooseneck, where am I going to go park? I need to be able to pull over there or I need to be able to get gas right here. And that's not wide enough right there to get a gooseneck can.
If you join the two together, where would you join it?
Probably on the interstate side, on the east side, which is where it was before.
I think it's in some of your grassy area, though, you're, we're trying to eliminate the amount of pavement, I think.
Right. There's not, the way we've got it right there, there's really not a lot of area on the west side to put a connection because of the drive-through there. And if you put the drive-through on the other side, we tried that and then you got a problem with, you know, you're on the driver's side, you get to the drive-through window and it's, there's a traffic problem there on the interior of the site. So the drive-through needs to be on, we're convinced, needs to be on the site, it's shown there. Now, you know, there might be a little bit between the drive-through and the road, but it's maybe a sharp turn for any kind of a, like a trailer that, what you're talking about with a boat, something like that. We could make it-
Wider?
Make it wider a little bit and try that.
On the, on the pass, on the car side entrance. I think it'd need to be wider because, I mean, there'll be, you know, ton trucks with thirty-foot goosenecks behind them, you know, or three-quarter ton trucks with thirty-foot goosenecks.
We have made it wide enough for things like moving vans, that kind of thing, but nothing with, you know, with a trailer or something, we can make it wider for that.
I think that'd be a very good idea.
Yeah.
Do they usually have gas also in the back?
No, I don't know for sure, automatic is just truck fuel.
Gets to the business side, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, what's your wishes on that, go back and look at that or what? Meet everything?
Everything else, I mean, really, that was the biggest change, was the separation of the traffic and then the stormwater issues. Everything else is pretty much the same as it was back last year when we reviewed this, so.
I think you could argue, my argument either way, by keeping them separate or let them have intermingled. So, they're in the business of running, I'd let them have as much freedom as they can, I guess. The city's got to prove it, no telling what they're going to find wrong with it when they look at it.
You know, the city has concerns about the flow of traffic, that's their standard comment, they put on a lot of these. We're not sure what their concerns are.
I would imagine that widening that entrance for the pedestrian cars would be something very achievable.
And something like that, if that's your, if this were to be approved, subject to that, that's something that could be, you wouldn't have to bring that back here for y'all's review, so we could do that in-house.
I'd either like to see them connected back in the back where you could fill up with gas and take a trailer, you know, camper, boat, whatever, over on the other side or put gas pumps over there with the diesel pumps, one of the two, you know. I don't know which is best. I understand what you're trying to achieve by separating them also.
You know, I can talk to Wilco and see if they, if they have the two separate kinds of, maybe they just have one regular fuel pump back in the back and the rest of them are the diesel. I just, I have to ask them. That's a point well made that, you know.
And then proper signage, you know, to say gas pumps for trucks with trucks and that kind of stuff.
That's right, I think there will already be some signage about trucks, you know, we might, they might can add it for the other kinds of trailers.
Won't be too many signs the city has approved.
I believe at that Carthage exit, they've got a pump designated itself, I mean, it's, you know, with diesel and gas up front.
Okay.
And that's for those trucks and cars that are using diesel, of course.
Yeah, yeah.
That are in that island here, but, and I think they connect at that Gordonsville Carthage exit right there.
Okay.
Their front and their back, but.
We just completed-
It's a little different situation than what we are here.
It may be, we completed one a few months ago in Mont Eagle and they're separated. You know, I don't know if it's a standard or what they did, the Wilco, right, right. Just up on top of Mont Eagle Mountain there. There's a little-
Maybe they're a new design then or something.
It was a brand, it's a, it's a brand-new development, a brand-new site that we kind of altered and so forth and made into a real nice place. It was a ghost town truck stop, you know, before and this is obviously just brand-new land that, that we're, it's a blank canvas for us to do, so. You know, so maybe if they have a development that is brand-new like this, they might want to have those things separated.
All right, what's your wishes?
Move to approve with the condition of the pedestrian, I guess that's what we're calling it, drive widened.
If you could make that subject to just all staff comments, that way, in addition to what you just said, that would be helpful for us to.
Okay, do we have a second?
Can I add something to that? I would either like to see them connected or gas pumps in the back too, so that would be part of staff looking at that.
So you're saying either connected in the back or?
Or put ga, or put one, you know, a set or two sets of gas pumps back there where the diesel pumps are.
On the truck side?
On the truck side for a truck, a gas truck with a trailer, car with a boat, whatever, right there.
Jeff, your motion?
That might be too much, why don't we ask them to come, why don't we ask them to come back at our Monday night meeting with some kind of revised plan?
That could be tough, if their gas tanks are in the front, they've got a pipe that's all the way back there.
Yeah, so it may be easier connected, that one, it's their choice, it doesn't matter to me, but I don't think you want gooseneck trailers or campers going into those gas pumps, you know, with no place to turn around, you know, thirty-foot, a lot of these campers are thirty feet now.
It might be appropriate, you know, I know there's a motion and a second on the floor, but it might be appropriate. If that's what you're wanting them to look into, they might be able to possibly look at the layout of the front part or take those concerns you have. It might be a good idea to just defer this, like they said, until the night meeting, have them have, give them a chance to kind of step back and take a look at that.
Do you have that kind of time in your project to come back in two weeks?
Yeah, yes, sir, I believe so.
Can I ask a question? Yeah. How long is a tractor-trailer from cab to end of illegal?
Fifty-three feet on some of the trailers.
Then the truck's going to be, because that's up on the truck.
Get a double sleeper truck with a long frame on it, it could be another, what, twenty-five?
Seventy-five, eighty feet.
Seventy-five, eighty feet.
So really, because there's approximately two hundred feet of Capital Way from the intersection to that car exit entrance? So that's only really two tractor-trailers that would be, would have traffic?
Little bit of space in between, you get two trucks and then it's, you close the door.
Same for right there, right there.
Are, going to defer this?
Well, that's, that's my suggestion, I mean, there'd need to be a motion to that effect.
There'll be a motion to defer it, give them time to work this out.
I remove my original motion, that's okay with everybody?
I'll make the motion to defer.
Second.
All present, motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
What we want to see is, are those traffic issues and the potential to connect and what type of gas pumps are back there?
Yeah, I think it'd be better to connect them with some kind of traffic plan to get those cars out then you eliminate what, you know, if it's a stack-up deal, then you eliminate what Will was talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Make it where they can't get back there too easy, but they can get out, you know.
Okay.
It'll be on Monday night, six o'clock, cross street. Eight, eight.
Before we leave this, can I ask Dale one more question? Just to make sure I'm clear and up to speed on regulations. Are, is the county slash city slash state of Tennessee, per the stormwater regulations, are you only still focusing on sediment removal and not hydrocarbon removal?
In this particular case, I think that's, the answer to that is yes. Again, we checked, we don't, there's not a requirement for the oil-water separator to, for the hydrocarbon part of it.
Okay, alright, so whether you get the oils from the parking lot down in the storm sewer, that's acceptable? Per the regulations as it exists?
Per the regulations, I don't like the idea, but we're trying to do it by the regulations.
Yeah, but TDEC right now is still just focused on sediment?
Right.
Not necessarily the hydrocarbons?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
If you really throw the detention area, though, you're going, some of that stuff's going to come out, right?
Yeah, you'll, you'll get it there.
You get a large portion of the oils and that kind of stuff.
And eventually, you know, then they have to clean out the, they'll have to have some kind of maintenance schedule where they clean out the stuff into detention area.
How do they do that?
Well, if it's contaminated with hydrocarbons, well, basically, it's the front and lower, they're going and clean it, just scoop it up.
Remove and replace?
Right.
They even have some exotic plants now that will actually suck up a lot of the hydrocarbons and then it just replaces the plants, yeah.
Yeah.
They even have some exotic plants now that will actually suck up a lot of the hydrocarbons and then it just replaces the plants, yeah. That's in a smaller rain garden, but there, there is some natural ways to actually get rid of that.
Okay. All right. Staff reports of the business public hearing for proposed zoning resolution amendments for the storm shelters.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. You'll recall back at our June twenty-eighth meeting this year, planning commission, we brought before you some revisions to our zoning resolution dealing with storm shelters. Of course, due to the outbreaks that we've seen of severe storms in this area over the last few years, our staff, as long with the building co-staff, have started getting more and more requests for storm shelters to be built and, you know, or on residential property, those kind of things. Uh, we really don't have any regulations per se on that. So while we want to encourage the, the, the construction and use of these type of facilities, at the same time, we want to make sure that everyone that's brought in is, is being treated the same as all the others. So we brought to you some proposed amendments last month. Uh, again, we're not trying to get overly involved as far as the regulation. Uh, we just want to make sure that, again, they're treated fairly, but not hinder them at the same time, people wanting to put them in. Basically, the, most of the discussion that we had at the June meeting regarded the construction of the, the facilities themselves. Uh, there was a lot of discussion about that, about the standards used for that, FEMA and whatnot. Uh, we decided to defer action on this to allow us to look into this a little bit. Uh, Mr. Jones, David Jones, our building co-director, we got with, with him and he has a handout here and I'll turn it over to, to Mr. Jones to kind of give you an overview of the, what he found through, through his research.
During, during my research on this, trying to update myself and the building coach department on rules and regulations, I did find that the National Storm Shelter Association has went into partnership, basically to co-write a document for ICC. Uh, the document is ICC, NSSA Standards for Storm Shelters. It's ICC five hundred. Uh, this is available to anyone that enforces the code, uh, the structural stability, the standards for the airborne material that is tested in Texas Tech University to, to come up with the standards and come up with the charts that show what can be used and what can't be used. In the past, the building coach department has been issuing building permits for about the last ten years. We've been going by the FEMA three twenty. And that is a good document and been real good in the past. In two thousand and eight, uh, ICC and the National Storm Shelter Association got together and came up with this document. Uh, it has been suggested to me by Dr. Kissling, uh, co, um, co-writer of this document, and he is the executive director of the National Storm Shelter Association. And, uh, this was suggested that this would be the document that would needed to be identified in our regulations if we, if we, uh, decide to do that.
And, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, and after that, what we ended up doing is on the, on the fourth point there regarding the, the standards and the inspections, we cited that particular code that Mr. Jones was speaking about. And so that, after showing him the revisions, he was, uh, he was happy with what we had for that.
All right, David, walk, walk us through if, if, I want to build a storm shelter. Here I come. Come up here.
Yes.
Yes, you start up in the planning department if it's separated from the house. If it's within the foundation of the house, uh, that's something that we would do just basically in the building coach department. But if it's a separate shelter or a separate accessory dwelling or accessory, um, building that has been, going to be made into a, a storm or safe room, they would have to start up in the planning department and come down and get a building permit. Um, as I said, we've been issuing building permits for storm shelters for over ten years. And this is a nineteen ninety-nine document here. I need to update on FEMA, uh, three twenty. But, um, the, the FEMA three twenty, this is the regula, uh, the, the specifications that we've been going by. Uh, and they show everything how to create that shelter. Um, so they have diagrams that, that engineers and, uh, building officials can go by when you build your storm shelter.
Okay. When I come up here and go through planning and then come down to you, do you give me a copy of that?
I can.
I don't have to go out and get an engineering firm to draw up anything to meet your regulations. You've got something there that I can use.
Well, I've got something that you can use, but a, a engineer does have to sign off on the construction. Even though, even though we're going by these standards and even though that we are inspecting it as it is being built, we do have to confirm, and it's in some of these, some of these documents, uh, in the standards, that a design professional does have to sign off on that, on that room. Also.
Off on those plans right there, or does he have to draw up, do you have to give him to draw up something that identical to that?
He can, he can do either one. He can go directly by the FEMA three twenty, or he can design a room himself. And his seal says that he has met the minimum standards for, uh, windborne debris in this area.
Okay. I want to build a storm cell, storm shelter. Uh, I come up here, it's gonna be outside. I'm gonna lay some blocks, I'm gonna haul me a lot of gravel in, I'm gonna have an entrance in it and I'm gonna call it a root cellar.
And, and you can do that too.
I can do that too. It's gonna be a storm, but it's gonna be a root cellar.
But to identify, for us to sign off on it, that it is a storm shelter certified and sealed by NSSA or a design professional, uh, that, that would be the case on, on the, um, engineered or, or designed for an engineer.
I don't have to have all that drawn on. I don't have to have all that.
We can't call your storm, we can't call your root cellar a storm shelter.
That's right.
But you can do it, you can use it, you can crawl under your house, you can make your front porch a storm shelter without these designs.
Yeah.
You know, and feel, feel safe a, as you can with what, what you design. But we can't identify it as a safe shelter.
What, what does it, what does it normally cost to get an engineer to sign off on something like that?
I, I, I don't know. I'm sure it varies, uh, from one to the other. I, I, I really couldn't tell you. I don't know the industry standards, um, on that.
It's gonna, if I can follow up on that. If you follow the FEMA or the ICC regulations or even this new association, the, the, what is it, the National Society?
Yeah, this ICC five hundred.
Yeah. They have minimum requirements, okay, for wall thickness, types of doors, things like that. Depends on what your tornado rating is. That's one thing that we would have to establish is to what wind load are we gonna design to? But typically, there are approved vendors all across the United States that are members of that, us National Association. And those members have already had all their designs tested by Tennessee Tech University. So a structural engineer here in Murfreesboro could look at what the proposal is and say, well, as long as you're building it per whatever F-three, F-four, F-five tornado requirement is, all he's gotta do is stamp that. That's probably a couple hundred bucks. He really doesn't have to do a complete set of drawings for a quote above-ground storm shelter.
What about these prefab deals that you see?
That's what, that's basically what they are. Most of them.
Same thing.
And put it in there.
Basically the same thing. Um, we have a, uh, producer of storm shelters that I spoke with, um, I can't, I can't think of his name right now, but I talked to him last week. And, um, he's in, um, Mont Eagle, Tennessee. And he is a producer and he is working with the bylaws of the National Storm Shelter Association to update them, to bring them into, into line with ICC also. So, so everything is still working together to try to come up with a national standard, which this is the national standard, but you still have little odds and ends to catch up on. And that's what we're doing right now. And that's what Tuscaloosa, Alabama, um, trying to have these meetings, um, trying to have these storm shelters, um, identified as storm shelters. Doing a lot of community storm shelters now in schools. Um, it's something that, um, possibly some grants can, can be done for community storm shelters also. And, um, that's what they're working on now with, uh, Mr. Waller in, in Mount, uh, Mont Eagle and, um, Mr. Kissling also.
I should probably know this, it just happened, but what did a representative do here locally for storm shelters? Something, you remember what, um, Representative Sparks? Wanted, wanted some kind of storm shelter to build something that went through the state here this last time? No? I was, I, I thought it was. I don't know what it, what it, but. I think we're trying to do the right thing, but then again, I mean, you know, we, we want to get it. We have to have an engineer to stamp and all that sort of stuff. I don't know if we're gonna encourage people or, or turn people away.
Well, eh.
You know, and, and really it's for our own safety. I understand that. I mean, that's why we have building codes and all that to, to make sure we do the wiring right, make it to, make sure we do the construction right, you know. But my case, I'd build one to an F-one or something and an F-ten come and blow me away or something, you know. And that, that could happen, but it just, um.
If it's an F-ten, we're all.
Well, yeah, we're probably, we're probably all gone.
I think F-five is as high as they go.
Oh, okay. Well, I don't know the terminology there, but anyway, it, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to do the right thing. It's just, I guess more or less, we're trying to encourage folks to, to do them if they, if they can.
What, what this does, and I look at it at a little bit different way than you do, um, I look at the industries out there, they're producing storm shelters. People are promoting theirself to build you a storm shelter. That's what it protects. It protects the citizens from those people that produce the shelters or those people that, that are not contracting shelters that may not be up to standards.
Gotcha.
And, and, and it, it's puts that NSA's seal, um, like Mr. Kush says.
So essentially, that's what we're proposing to do here, is if somebody comes and gets a permit and they want a prefab storm shelter, you're gonna say it's gotta be up to those standards right there.
That's correct. We will go out, we'll inspect it by the manufactured suggested installation, look for that seal on it, we're through.
But if somebody wants to just build a safe room where they feel safe, they can do like Craig said, get a permit for an accessory structure like a storage building and put six, eighteen or eighteen-thick concrete walls and a steel door. And that's not, like you said, a storm shelter. It's a tool shed that's built really strong. If they feel safe in it, then that's their own business. It's just not stamped.
Yeah.
The county's not liable saying that was a storm shelter.
That's correct. That's correct.
And that person can still do that.
Right.
As long as that's good. I think we need to protect people, but we don't want to nanny state them either.
Right.
One other, just a quick follow-up question. Steve was saying, uh, there, there may be a, a number of companies that are out there that, that will come in and put in one of these diving pods in the ground. But they have to get a permit to do that, right?
That's correct.
Just like they have to get a permit to build a swimming pool.
That's correct.
And as long as they get a permit, have to get a permit to do that, then they have to have this, it meets all of our standards, seal of approval. That, that, that's what I would be interested in, to make sure that people that are out there are protected by someone coming in and putting in a fiberglass, something that won't, won't really represent what they really want, so.
David, I have a question. Um, I don't, I'm not clear exactly on what the scope and authority of an engineer is, but I would imagine there are engineers, of course, that are involved in the design of these prefab storm shelters. So would we take the engineer's stamp from the guy who designed it to say it meets the regulations? Or is, do they have to have a local engineer who says it meets the regulations?
We can accept, the design engineer that you're talking about that produced the, um, the unit, uh, we can accept his design because, because what he's gonna do, he, he's gonna make sure that he is sealed by NSA.
So it's not another layer?
No.
No.
Not necessarily.
David, years ago, I know we're going down through Beathridge and to, down, I don't know what the highway is over there, but the, the good road that goes Beathridge, there, there's been people selling storm, a sort of a tornado alley over there before it was over here. And you'd see them in yards, storm sellers for sale. Those probably don't meet that book.
Uh, some may, some may not. And that, that's exactly what this protects, you know, like we say, uh, uh, we, we do look for that NSA, uh, seal. What's happening right now, the, the industry, um, the communities are, are getting flooded with, I got a storm shelter on a trailer, let me bring it to your house and then install it, you know. And, and that's what we have to make sure, that they are sealed and certified, um, and have gone through that testing at Tennessee Tech.
But if I bought one of those and did install it and then, and you, you just wouldn't be certified as a storm seller. It'd be a root cellar.
It, it could be. It would not, it would not be classified as a storm or a safe room.
And that's what we have to watch.
Man cave. It'd really be a cave.
But if, you know what, if you, if you build a root cellar or a man cave and if you elect to put a twenty-gauge steel door on it and a tree limb comes through it, I'm sorry for your luck, but it's not really a tornado shelter. It's a man cave and it's a root cellar. So that's what we have to be careful of. If we are, if we are saying it's a tornado shelter, then it needs to have that stamp of approval. It must meet minimum specifications. Otherwise, we, you're in a liability situation we don't want to be in.
Has, has all this been through legal?
I don't think we've actually discussed this in, uh, in any detail with our legal staff. Now, Mr. McCray was at the last meeting. I don't believe he's got any, I mean, he's, he's here if he's got any concerns or comments. I'm sure he can make those known, but.
I just want to make sure our understanding is the same that.
Well, I mean, obviously, I don't know anything in detail as to the engineering requirements of a storm shelter, other than what I'm hearing from Mr. Jones. But I think in, in general, um, creating a definition of storm shelter that will require compliance with standards is an appropriate way to proceed. So, um, if that is the standard, the recognized standard, and the intention then is to have our regulations cite to that standard in order to qualify as a storm shelter, I think that sounds like an appropriate way to, to move forward with it.
Okay. We need to open us up for public hearing, right? We will open us up for public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak for, against, comments? Public hearing. You're the only public. Do you want to say anything? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. All right. What's your wishes?
I like the motion to approve as presented.
Second. All right. All for the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
And this will be brought before the county commission at their September meeting. This one will present this.
My, my only, my only thing we need to be thinking about is if somebody wants to build an above-ground tornado shelter or an above-ground root cellar, that, that needs to fall under our outbuilding regulations. And certainly there may be some issues if the aesthetics of a pre-cast concrete or a steel above-ground or a blot. I mean, not everybody's gonna want to see a big giant piece of concrete in their backyard. That's true. We've, I mean, he, we've got some verbiage in here about burmaging it up at a three-to-one and so forth, but typically if it's an above-ground approved shelter, it's at least eight feet tall. So, I mean, it, it, it's not gonna be the prettiest thing out there in somebody's backyard. So I'm just, I want you to be aware of that. And just.
Do our, I was gonna ask, do our accessory structures, I just don't remember, do they speak to the fact that accessory structures have to be of like material as the main structure?
Not, not in that regard, no. They don't. Now, there are a lot of restrictive covenants and subdivisions that have those kind of provisions, but we don't enforce anything like that. Basically, these would, in, in the sense that if, if they're gonna be, as Mr. Kush said, above-ground, they're treated as accessory structures as far as setbacks. Not so much as the square footage is concerned, you know, to help encourage the development of these, we did not count them in the size restrictions as far as. as far as, you know, if, uh, somebody has two acres of land, they're allowed to have eighteen hundred square foot of detached accessory space. These will not count toward that. Now, it will still count as part of their overall lot coverage, but it will not count as far as their, uh, exact, um, space that they're allowed to have for detached structures. As far as the aesthetics are concerned, uh, no, there, we don't, we don't regulate that, so.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I've just really have just a, under stat, this isn't actually on the agenda, but this is something that, that we did want to bring to your attention. Uh, we passed out a timeline that looks like this for the consideration and, uh, adoption of the new zoning resolution. Uh, staff has been, uh, in frequent, uh, communication with our consultant team. We've had a number of sit-down meetings, uh, concerning the, the draft of the zoning resolution. Uh, we've basically gone, now, we've gone, we're doing our second set of comments at this point, uh, with the consultant. We're hoping to have, well, we sat down with our consultant about a week or so ago and presented this timeline to them, and they felt it was acceptable. At this point, what, uh, we're expecting to see is the working, final working draft received in our office by August eighteenth, which is about three or so weeks from now. Uh, after we get that, we would distribute it that following Monday, the twenty-second, at the Planning Commission meeting, uh, along with the, the steering, the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. We, with a brief presentation about the regulations, we'd all give you a copy of the, of the regulations. Uh, no public meeting or hearing at that point, as far as, uh, the public being able to speak on it. It would just be the first time you would see it. Uh, the following day meeting in September, the twenty-sixth, we would have a joint workshop with you, the Planning Commission, as well as the Steering Committee for the Comprehensive Plan, to review the draft. You know, we'd ask you to read it over that next month and then give us your comments and everything. We'd kind of have, we'd have a more detailed presentation at that time, uh, more like with our consultant team here to, you know, answer questions, discussion, whatnot. Uh, in October, the tenth, we would have, uh, that'd be our night meeting. We'd present, uh, the zoning map. We'd be working on the zoning map at this time. And also the revised draft, any comments that we received from, from you during the September work session. Uh, we would go ahead and, uh, present that draft to you, as well as you'd get the first look at the zoning map at that point. Uh, then you see in October, we have, uh, at this point, four tentative dates scheduled for community meetings throughout the county. We would kind of handle this the same way we did when we started the Comprehensive Plan. We'd kind of go through the four quadrants of the county and have a meeting in each quadrant, just to get more input into the process. Uh, try to find out what the people's concerns are, uh, regarding the zoning. And then on the twenty-fourth of October, we would, uh, report, report our progress to you, uh, regarding those meetings, uh, that we had. Uh, in November, we would propose to have our first public hearing, uh, before the Planning Commission. So, uh, that would, yeah, we, we expect there'd be a, a lot of comments and everything at that, and that would be also for the map. Now, depending on how things are, uh, how the meeting goes, we would propose at that point either a second public hearing in December, if needed, or if everything, everybody seemed to be okay with it, then at that point, we could, uh, probably consider the revised map and zoning resolution at the January two thousand and twelve meeting. Now, and then depending, again, if that's the case, if it, there's a second public hearing in December, uh, we're probably looking at February for the Board of Commissioners. Now, the reason you're seeing kind of a jump between November and January and December and February is really for advertising, uh, purposes. The, uh, when you're going, when you're looking, when you're doing just amendments to a zoning resolution, you're required to do the fifteen-day notice. Uh, however, when we're looking at something like, like this, overhauling the system, you're required a thirty-day notice. So it's, it's a little more on the, uh, on the notice, notification side. So that's why you're seeing kind of a gap in, in between those, those two public hearings. Now, with that being said, uh, we realize that this is a very, it's a very aggressive timetable that we have placed before you. Uh, we know that there may be some kinks in the road that, uh, you know, that this may have to be altered, but we wanted to have something to start with at least. Also, within this, uh, which is not really listed here at this point, probably in October or November, we're looking at bringing the subdivision regulations to you. Uh, there, we are still working with the consultant team as far as the subdivision regulations. Those can be adopted just by this body, the Planning Commission. And, uh, really, a lot of that, I don't think is gonna be, it's, it's really dealing more with the process of subdivision plat review than it is actually the zoning or anything. So we can consider that independently of the zoning. We could be operating under our new subdivision regulations even before the, uh, the new zoning resolution is adopted. So that just kind of gives you an idea of where we're going. Uh, because of that, and I know we haven't had very many night meetings, uh, the last few months, just because of lack of zoning cases. Uh, we do have some zoning cases for next month, and chances are at this point, every meeting, at least until the end of the year, just to let you know, we will be having every scheduled meeting that we're supposed to be having. So that just kind of gives you just an overview of what we're looking at. And we just kind of wanted to get this to you just, uh, for your information. And if you have any questions or comments, uh, we'd be more than happy to, to get those at this point. Uh, Ms. Emslie, am I missing anything based on your timeline? Okay, thank you. But, uh, that's pretty much what, uh, we have for this. Again, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. If you think of something after the meeting, please feel free to give me a call. Again, this is a tentative timeline. We know that things might come up that might kind of skew this some, but we, uh, want to kind of give you an idea where we're, where we're heading with this, so.
Okay, questions? Thing else, Doug?
Uh, just one other thing, and I don't think I, uh, I don't think I'd actually made this announcement, and if I didn't, I apologize. Uh, Ms. Emslie took the, uh, certified planning exam back in May of this year, I believe, and, uh, she has passed the exam, so, uh, we, she is now a certified planner.
Alright.
If I. That gives us three out of four of our planners now that are certified, so we're very happy with that. But, uh, I, I know when, uh, Ms. Glauner passed her exam and made that announcement, and I got to thinking about that the other day, and I don't think I did that for, for her, so I didn't want her to think I was leaving her out. That was completely unintentional, so. But, uh, unless, Mr. Corvus, you have anything else, uh, that's all we have for today.
Did, did, did I sleep through the Leanna estate steal, or did that get pulled?
That was pulled because the revisions didn't make it to us in time for our review.
I slept.
You voted for it. Have a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
June the second.
Second.